As I said, I was the acting deputy director before Stephen came. So in Scotland, you know, there's a badlerized saying that many a mickle makes a muckle, which is a corruption of many a little makes a mickle, which probably doesn't make much sense to you. But mickle means much. So lots of little bits add up to something very substantial. And that's true of productivity. Productivity is something that's very big over the longer term. But in the short term, it's comprised of small improvements. So I'm going to talk about productivity in the pandemic, talk about the aggregate picture. Some look at some of the sectors, firm creation and destruction, consider furlough, and then go on to consider capital scarring and then ask at the end, did COVID change productivity? What keep you hanging for the conclusion of that? But it's a bit like Chao En Lai, the Chinese premier, when he was asked about what were the results of the French Revolution? And he said, it's too early to say. Well, it's too early to say on COVID, but that doesn't stop us speculating, does it? So COVID, and more particular, the furlough scheme changed the relationship between hours and output in a profound way. Because normally what you see as we head into a recession, output falls and hours fall by less. Why? Because firms have some specific capital invested in some of their workforce and they're reluctant to lose that. They're reluctant to see a dislocation because getting those workers back later may not be possible. So it would be a write-off of a capital investment. The furlough scheme changed that. It made hours a much more variable factor than they previously were. So what you saw was that in 20, the hours actually fell by more than GDP, much more. Normally, in the book, we say that if we're given the size of the downturn in output, which was five times as big in the last recession, you would have expected unemployment to increase by six or seven points more than it did, which was only one point. So there's definitely a very big change. And you can see that now we've got data for 2021. There was bounce back, but productivity increased in 2020, whereas in 2008, 2009, productivity fell, which is the normal relationship. So there was definitely a big shift. And the labour market behaved very differently. And probably had we seen separations between workers and their employers, we would have seen a more lasting of adverse effect on productivity, is my feeling, than we actually did. So there were very different sectoral patterns throughout the economy, where manufacturing, which is typically the sector that sees the most cyclical downturn, typically sees the biggest fall in productivity because it hangs on to high skilled workers. I didn't see that. They were able to offload some of their lower skilled workers and productivity went up. Where there was a big fall in productivity was in finance and insurance, which also did rather badly after the last recession. And that's because ATM transactions fell, new loan applications fell. But they didn't really use the furlough scheme very extensively. They got people to work from home. Productivity suffered, and that's now bounced back. And I think that's one of the stories really, that the book, we didn't have the data to pick that up fully, that the bounce back in productivity that we've seen in 2021 in some of the sectors unwinds what happened in 2020. Clearly, there were very different experiences according to how client-facing, customer-facing businesses were. So we saw rates of furlough in accommodation and food services that were 70% or so for some categories of worker. And what you see, consistent with the story that we've told about laying off lower productivity workers, is that the highest skill level in every industry saw the lowest rates of furlough. So the guys you furloughed were the least productive. And that shift within the labour force towards higher productivity workers was one of the things that enabled productivity to rise overall. So this just looks at the rates of growth of productivity between different sectors. And clearly, services, because it was affected so much more by COVID than other industries, was where we saw the biggest fall in output and the biggest fall in hours. And again, if you look at finance and insurance, I think one of the remarkable things about finances and insurance is that they hired people in 2020, but the number of hours has been cut quite savagely in 2021. I don't fully understand the reason for that. Maybe it's because they learned that the experience of 2020 and having people working from home was that they could actually do without many of the people that they had. But certainly, they've cut hours. It may also be a response to an impact on profitability, of course. And undoubtedly, there's some Brexit effect in there, because clearly some people have relocated out of London elsewhere. So that may not be a COVID story. This just looks at health and education, where there seemed to be some very big shifts. Clearly, there are questions about how you measure the output. I know our director, Jajik Chadard, asked questions about the deflator for health services. And clearly, there are big difficulties when there's a big shift in the composition of health output during 2020 and back in 2021. But the numbers are quite remarkable. In education, we did see a big fall in output hours and productivity, and some partial bounce back in 2021. Whether we'll see 2022 see a full recovery, I think, is yet to be seen. Let's talk about new business registrations. So one of the remarkable things that happened in the start of 2020 was when the lockdown came, there was a big fall in business registrations, and then a big surge. And I must say, I was very cynical about that surge, because I thought it was all people setting up bogus companies, registering bogus workers, taking bogus payments, and were then going to wind up those companies after furlough ended. And there were quite a few instances of that. There have clearly been a number of cases, thousands of cases registered to single addresses, for example. But the remarkable thing is that a number of business registrations have continued at a very high level. And this may indicate that there's a shift in entrepreneurship. A lot of these businesses, the particular areas, sector that's seen a big increase has been wholesale and retail. And that may be because new opportunities have opened up. Or it may be that people, because the labour market is tight, see some opportunities to expand. And that may be because some existing firms are cash strapped, because they ran up large debts during the downturn. But the number of business registrations is clearly nearly double what it was before COVID hit. And there's a question about what does that mean for productivity? If you look at the output per head of young firms, it's much less than more established firms. But those firms, if they grow quickly, if they survive and grow quickly, may add to productivity growth. So I think the jury's out at this stage about what this exactly means for productivity. And maybe the panelists would have some comments on that. Furlough also aided zombification, which I thought was a worrying sign. Because clearly, there were some firms who would have normally wound up, but because they were getting cash injections from HMG, kept going, hoping for the resurrection trade, that things would turn around, business would be much better. And so insolvencies plunged, but now they're back at higher levels. Now, whether this is a catch-up of companies that didn't go bust but should have in 2021, or whether it's a reflection of the high rate of company formation, also means a high rate of company destruction. Again, we're not quite sure about that picture. But that's interesting. There's a question about whether we should support jobs or incomes, because clearly, the US adopted a very different tactic from the UK and Europe. Europe tended to try and keep firms and employees together, whereas in the US, you didn't care whether people were sacked or not. And employment is at will. It's very easy to sack people. But there were huge handouts to individuals and households. Overall, it doesn't suggest that in the longer run, this made much difference, though it did make a difference to the dynamics of the position. And then there's a question of capital scarring, where this is based on a presentation we gave to the OBR, where we were trying to scare them a bit about how much capital scarring might be. Because clearly, their tendency is to say, there's not going to be much capital scarring. We don't have to revise down future output. Tax revenues are going to be buoyant. So we wanted to make the opposing case. Maybe we overegged the pudding. But we identified a number of possible ways in which we might see more capital scarring, accelerated depreciation. Capital would be in the wrong sector. You know, there's a shift away from services towards staff, towards manufacturers, which might require higher capital ratios, capital output ratios, duplication. And there's a question about housing versus business. And when we came up with figures, we came up with a figure of three and a half percent to six and a half percent, which maybe seem excessive. A lot was due to lower investment. So the capital stock at the end of '24 would be one and a half percent lower, lower than expected GDP. And then some scrapping and reallocation, and more uncertainty. You know, if you're thinking about the rate of return you might require in services in order to invest, well, you've just been through this experience where there's been a huge hit. So the uncertainty premium you will require for your investment presumably will be higher than before to open a restaurant, for example, because you know that this sort of thing might return. So I do think that although these figures are probably on the high side, I do think they indicate that we're probably likely to end up with a lower productive capital stock than we would do otherwise. Now, if you look at the actual latest capital investment numbers, what you see is capital investment is about 2% higher than it was in 2019. But the composition is hugely different. Brits are doing what Brits do best, which is not invest in business. So business investment is 9.1% below the level of 2019. Housing investment is 13.2% up, and public sector investment is about up by about a third. So it looks like we're not allocating investment to the sectors that are the most productive, where there's most potential, but we're buying houses. Now, this chart, if you look at the book, this chart looked rather different because manufacturing numbers were up compared with the stats 2019, and now they're not. What this says, what the chart was meant to say was that we're switching from sectors that have low capital output ratios to sectors like manufacturing, that's a high one. And that's going to mean a shortage of capital. That's not actually what has happened. What's happened is we've just allocated more capital towards the public sector. The public sector's been very successful in preempting a bigger share of resources in this economy as a result of COVID, partly because the Treasury overestimated the size of the black hole in the public finances. And so therefore, there was a tax increase, including the corporate taxes, including national income surcharge. And that enabled the public sector, when the black hole turned out to be not as deep as expected, enabled the public sector to expand in a way that hadn't been planned. So the final thoughts. I have worries about what COVID means for productivity, mostly due to the lower level of business investment. And I think that's very concerning. I think in particular, our investment in the high productivity sectors is too low. And that's because for 50 years, the rate of return for manufacturing has been below the rate of return for services. So it's not surprising that this economy has reallocated resources towards services that requires little capital. The productivity overall is 1.9% above pre-COVID levels, in line with the trends. So that says, maybe COVID was a blip. Maybe the stories that we looked at were short term, and now it's unwinding. There's no lasting difference. I'm not totally convinced of that, because I do think that we've seen a big increase in the share of the public sector in the economy and a worrying decline in business investment. Now, some of that may be temporary. So if you look at where business investment is lower, vehicles is lower. And clearly, that's partly due to supply constraints in trucks and in autos. So that may be temporary. But unless there's a much higher rate of investment in the future, the capital stock is going to be permanently lower. Supporting jobs and not income, I'm not clear that that made a difference. I think that you've got to do one or the other. If the US government and the UK government hadn't have come up with extraordinary measures, we would have had big lasting effects on demand and on productivity. I'm sure about that. Not sure it matters which one you do. The question about firm births and deaths, I think, is unresolved. Clearly, there were big shifts in the economy potentially due to COVID. And there are a lot of people who, we see this in quits, who are prepared to reallocate resources, labour resources, either their own or their firms, towards new sectors. And I think the meaning of that for productivity longer term is unclear. Overall, although there were some concerns about capital scarring, the long-run effects, I think so far seem to have been small. So on that, I'll hand over to Adrian.
Thank you. Thank you very much to Paul. And Paul is much, much more than a warm-up act. In fact, he's an incredibly tough act to follow. So I will start my remarks by saying that we're trying in this publication, and more generally at NISA, to connect the macro to the micro. So to connect the big picture, the global and national dynamics to sectoral household and regional developments. And I think one of the things that comes out of that work, not just in the COVID and productivity occasional paper, but also in our quarterly outlook, is that COVID wasn't the great leveler. You know, it didn't somehow reduce inequalities or regional variations or sectoral ones. In fact, just the opposite. It has really both shown a light on existing disparities, but also exacerbated certain inequalities. And the three gaps, I think, that emerge most clearly are gaps in regional and local capital markets, which then feeds into the financial SMEs and other businesses. And Paul's already touched upon some of that, the lack of business investment. Gaps in skills, so skills mismatch, lack of smart graduates, but also vocational and technical skills. And then the third gap is an institutional gap, that we don't have the right institutions to address the productivity problem that has beset the UK for so long that COVID again hasn't in any way improved, but on balance, made worse. So I'll touch on some of these issues, though not all, for sake of time. But really, it's to highlight this point that the macro picture and the micro foundations are closely linked, both in this occasional paper, but also in our quarterly outlook. For the last two years now, includes a chapter on the regions and the households, which I know you are reading religiously, especially the one that's just come out in May. So let me start with some remarks around regional labour productivity. The picture, as I think, is fairly well-known. First of all, we have some large variations. And above all, of course, London being so far ahead. And we're projecting that London will steam ahead. And except for parts of the South East, will really be far out ahead of all the other regions in the United Kingdom. But what's as worrying, if not more worrying, is that only London has productivity levels that are comparable to the performance of the most productive regions in other G7 economies and in the 38 OECD economies. So we have a problem both nationally and regionally, if you like, but also internationally. And we know from the work of others, such as Philip McCann, that the second tier of UK cities, so the Manchesters, the Birmingham's, the Leeds, the Carders, the Belfasts, and so on, are less productive than their counterparts. And that is another cause for concern. So that does raise both empirical and theoretical questions. Empirically, you know, do we have all the data? And is this really what's happening post-COVID as well? Is it even worse after COVID? And we tend to think that, yes, on balance, it's going to be worse for second-tier regions. But also raises the threat of a question of, you know, how do we think about this? In terms of agglomeration effects, and then in terms of policy, how do we help maximize those effects? But also, what do we do about the periphery? So will the periphery, or the places that aren't going to be very productive, show, are they going to be pulled up by the other areas? Or do we need specific policy interventions to help the rule in the coastal areas in the various regions that are not just lagging behind, but further falling behind? Here, you can see the way that the picture was before the pandemics of 2019. Then in 2020, and our forecast for 2024, really what emerges, I think, quite clearly is London, though perhaps not necessarily as far ahead as it was before the pandemic, depending a little bit on what happens in the next two years, nevertheless way ahead. And the other regions really struggling to keep up. Now, we need, of course, more granular data. This is still quite a broad picture. But apart from London and the metropolitan areas of the South East, there are few examples of really thriving, productive cities and towns in the United Kingdom. When you look at the impact of COVID and, of course, of Brexit as well, on export by region, we can also see why certain areas have been struggling more than others. And here, I think it's worth highlighting just how much the COVID and Brexit shock has affected the West Midlands and parts of the North East, but also Wales and Scotland. Less so Northern Ireland, partly because of the current arrangements. So there's lots of uncertainty, of course, about the protocol. And that again has various implications. One of them is that the sectors that were doing well already have benefited from foreign direct investment before COVID, so ICT and electronics. But since then, it's more green technologies that's attracted foreign direct investment. But on the whole, the problem is that we just have far too little outside of London and the South East. So on this, what you can see here is that London and the South East, taken together, attract the lion's share. And unfortunately, that is a dynamic that is only continuing. We, you know, don't have any reasons to believe that that will be reversed unless there's a major change in the institutional and the policy framework. I want to touch a little bit on education and skills as well, because that's one of the gaps that we've identified. So the problem with COVID is that it has widened the already existing deep disadvantage gap in terms of educational outcomes and social mobility. We knew that social mobility was falling before COVID, but COVID has accelerated that. And there are both short-term and longer-term effects here. So the short-term effect is on the parents, who usually rely on educational settings. They, of course, were either less productive because they had all the childcare to do, or at some point, they would just be exhausted because they were doing both their work and childcare and learning. And that, of course, isn't sustainable over any period of time. But then there's a longer-term impact on the children who are concerned by this, of both the children and the teenagers missing out on learning, but also crucially, on the socio-emotional development that we know plays a big role when it comes to lifetime earnings. And just to anticipate where this is going, total learning losses, we think, could equate to lifetime earning losses of between £8,000 in the best-case scenario and £22,000 per pupil in the worst-case scenario. So there are some very worrying developments, if not more, is done between now and when these kids enter the labour force. Just to say that there's also, of course, a very strong impact here on women, because women have borne the brunt of this, of the closure of all the educational settings during the first lockdown and the lack of provision during the second and the third, because it was women, unsurprisingly perhaps, but very sadly, who spend more time on childcare than men, especially when children were under the age of five. So this is ONS data on parenting and lockdown, and some very clear differences there, which in turn affect labour, the labour market participation for women, which is in some cases gone down quite a lot, or indeed inactivity. Women just not feeling they can do both, and therefore dropping out for some time. Another factor in this is UK childcare costs, which are very high by international comparison, and in some cases exceed what families pay for mortgage or for rent. And the problem in particular here is the early years setting, which we know is very important for the development of children, but also, of course, for working parents, and again, working women in particular. And not only was there closure and lack of support, as I'll say in a moment, but early years and school attendance has not returned to pre-pandemic levels. So that's the analogy to inactivity. Kids have dropped out and they haven't come back. And that then has effects on them and their productivity further down the line, but also effects on their parents. So the problem with the early year sector was that it received no additional funding for costs associated with COVID, whether it was, you know, particular forms of equipment or cleaning or anything. So it didn't benefit from the same measures of support as schools or universities did. It had very limited access to the furlough scheme. Right? And weren't really, or rather, the business rate relief and local authority discretionary grants were not widely accessible to those early-year providers. And then childminders could not access the various business loan schemes because applications were based on profit, not income. And these settings don't really make much profit at all. So there were also some real design problems here that shouldn't have occurred. And for schools, we had, of course, four key harms to learning and attainment that resulted from the closure during the various lockdowns. So reduction in time spent on learning, a reduction in the quality of the schoolwork, a lack of access to technology, especially for the most deprived schools in the most deprived areas of the country. And then the impact on attainment when schools reopened. So just to give you a few brief examples, for the first half of the autumn term 2122, so this is the lockdown, learning losses for pupils were higher for maths than for reading, and higher for children from areas of disadvantage than areas of affluence. In maths and in reading respectively, the learning loss for children in disadvantaged areas was 4.3 months compared to 3.4 months. In maths and in reading respectively, the learning loss for children in disadvantaged areas is four point three months compared to three point four months and two point two compared with one point seven for their most advantaged peers. So when it comes to to reading or to maths, the most disadvantaged suffered more than the advantaged ones. So the existing inequalities became worse during COVID. So this also plays into the digital divide, that there simply wasn't the access to technology to engage with remote learning. So that is one of those factors that we need to remember. Here's the the chart on the total lifetime earning losses that I mentioned a little earlier. So the pessimistic scenarios puts us at about twenty two thousand pounds. The central scenario still at about fifteen and only the optimistic scenario thinks it could be in inverted commas, as little as eight. The problem, of course, is the lack of funding for a lot of these institutions. That will bring me to the institutional gap in a minute, but on funding, just to say, in the last spending review in October twenty one, there was talk of a skills revolution with three billion being committed, but that three billion over three years barely takes us back to twenty ten levels. So there's still a lot of catching up to do and we know that the funds committed so far certainly insufficient if we want to reduce some of those losses and indeed if we want to reduce some of the disparities. So on institutions more generally, and industrial policy is a good case here. I think what we've seen with COVID is the reality of the institutional setting in the UK, which is we have simply inadequate institutions. We have too much churn and too many silos, a very short termist outlook, but also weak and ineffective institution when it comes to doing things at regional or local level. So we are geographically highly centralized with Westminster and Whitehall, but functionally very fragmented. So the different areas, the different policy areas aren't properly joined up. And that has been a problem. Take industrial policy, base, treasury, number ten. There isn't really a clear strategy or plan and certainly no institutional support for it. And for regional regeneration or leveling up, if you prefer to call it that, you also need a clear framework, robust institutional ecology and a long term strategy with transformative policies. That means a scale investment and more local design and delivery because only at the local level do you have all the knowledge that central governments simply cannot have. So I'll conclude with some thoughts. One is that COVID has exposed the fragile foundations of the UK economic model, but also revealed new weaknesses, some of which Paul talked about, but certain in terms of skills, capital markets and institutions. A resilient economy that is capable of generating sustainable inclusive growth requires a lot more than what we currently have. A much more robust framework with clear concepts and a solid evidence base. We think a much better policy mix, looser fiscal policy and tighter monetary policy. And above all, strong institutions that can actually actually help translate this over the medium and long term. Thank you very much.
To discuss the paper is Professor Bart Alliance Manchester Business School and also the Managing Director of the Productivity Institute. Have ten minutes.
Thanks, Stephen. Well, first of all, congratulations to National Institute colleagues for doing this big piece of work and I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to say a few words about that. At the Productivity Institute, we're very happy to support this work because in the early days of the Productivity Institute back in twenty twenty, the user C, which is our founder, asked us to come up with some quick pieces on the impact of COVID. Nobody at that time would, of course, know what exactly would happen, but Nisa was one of the participants in the institute who took up this challenge and delivered this great piece. So thank you for that. I'm not quite sure how to distinguish my roles of discussion from the panelists, but I think I'll stay a little bit closer to the content of the book so that the panelists can sort of, you know, feel a little bit more on their own, on their own topics now. All things, good things go in three points or in seven, and I struggle a little bit because three points is better because you can be short, but it was not enough to put in all my praise. Seven points are perhaps too many and you risk that you become a little bit too critical on minor issues, but but I assured Adrian before it's all friendly fire. So let me try to to do it on the seven points, but I'll try to, you know, do one minute each for each of them. So let me start with perhaps somewhat philosophical question, and that is, you know, when indeed is the right time to put up an evaluation of the effect of the effects of an event that massive and that impactful as the pandemic? We're two years since the beginning of the pandemic. We're still in the midst of the aftermath of COVID. We still see all sorts of things around us that that reminds us of the pandemic, whether it's the backlog and all sorts of activities, including, you know, travel and conferences, but other activities that are actually slowly increasing, like a part of the culture sector, but still complaining that things are not back to what they should be. The persistence of work from home and the permanent changes or just employment rates that in some ways are not back to where they should be. So some of the effects for for business and people may still not have fully played out at this point. And that's also also true for the whole concept of scarring and we still have to see how that's all going to play out. Now, I do think that the book and and Sir Charlie referred to that this morning as well, really benefited from greater availability of real time data compared to previous periods. So, you know, whether it's Google Analytics or decision makers panel, I do think that in this crisis, there was a benefit of having this real time data and we do see it some that that in the book reflected as well. But I think overall, the book does a good job in trying to balance sort of describing what has happened, but also try to identify the longer term impacts, even though we're still in the middle of it. This brings me to my second point. And that it is, it's quite difficult to adequately distinguish at this point the impacts from the pandemic, from the impacts of the overall weakness that we were seeing in productivity pre pandemic and some of the events that have happened since that create additional challenges for the pandemic. And the authors really go and paint in the book and also in the presentation to point this out to us. But I think it's true that we're simply too close to the event to sort of be very definitive. So I'm very sympathetic to the analogy of the French Revolution that, you know, we're just, we can't just say what the effects are going to be. And that's, of course, especially also true for the effects on regional analysis, for example. And to be honest, I'm not quite confident that we really can conclude too much on how the pandemic is going to impact these regional disparities. But I think it is a good try. And when it comes to institutions, it's perhaps even more difficult to disentangle these things. The third point is the unique pattern of sectoral productivity performance during the pandemic, which is very well documented, including the statistical effect that we had from this temporary closure of low productivity sectors like culture and accommodation. I cannot resist to give Josh Martin's analogy. I think Josh is, oh yeah, you're right there in the room. Josh wants and said this, if you have a room with people of different sizes, you send out the shortest out of the room, the average goes up, but nobody gets taller. And I have to tell you that I've stolen this from him because in my whole career, I finally managed to explain to non academics what sexual reallocation really means. So thank you for that. And it obviously was very clearly playing out during during the pandemic. But I do quibble a little bit with the the commentary on the book on on some of the large falls in in finance and in the healthcare sector. I'd like to go a little bit into that, but because of the timed five minutes that I've got, I don't want to go too much into it. On healthcare, however, I would say, yes, we did see this rapid fall in productivity and that may have been overstated a little. But we really need to look separately at what happened to sort of the direct COVID related treatment, which actually, according to the Ian Coriel's work, has shown a rapid increase in productivity. It was a lot of new technology and a lot of new productive things that happened to treat the pandemic. But of course, the non COVID related treatments hugely suffered from our productivity decline, simply because we shut things down. So I don't think that we can be all that positive on the overall healthcare effect. My fourth point, my fourth point is that the book is relatively muted, not entirely silent, but relatively muted on the effects of work from home. There seem to be, there are some references to the effects of work from home and sort of saying that it probably hasn't done much harm. And it does acknowledge that, you know, it may have played a role in the digital divide and things like that, but there isn't a broad based discussion on it. And I think one reason is that perhaps the author thought it gets enough attention in other places. It might just reflect that the author don't think it's that big a deal. Or we simply don't know. But I do think it's regrettable regrettable because I think of all the things that happened during the pandemic. This was, you know, an historical labour market experiment that we're probably not going to see again. And I think the book could have benefited from a chapter on this, even though I am also on the fence on what the ultimate effect of this is going to be. But there will be some effects, given that we know what the preferences of people have become since the pandemic. My fifth point is on the rapid increase in new startups, which is absolutely fascinating and it's great that we have a separate chapter on that. When the book was published, we didn't know too much on what would happen to firm deaths. Paul talked a little bit about this and it's perhaps still a little bit too early. But we do see in the data that you showed that we have an increase in solvency, but liquidations and firm deaths are still relatively low. So I still do worry a lot about the fact that we have a sort of new zombie phase where we have a lot of firms in there that will keep us at this sort of low productivity, low skills, low wage path. This would be all the more a concern now that the wage pressures are going to go up. So what's going to happen to these firm deaths? But I think there could be a real disaster ahead of us. Six points and then my seventh point and then I'm done. Six points on the role of intangible investment. There's quite a bit on intangibles in the chapter on digital. There's a lot of concern that rising firm debt could potentially have negative effects on on intangibles. But overall, I think the book would really have benefited from trying to get other arms around some real time data on how intangibles as another investment could actually change the whole productivity story. And I think, you know, we'll see more of that also coming up now that data are coming out. My final point is, what does this mean for the long term outlook? It would have been great if the offers, which after all represent one of the west best well known forecast institutes in the country, to really include a bit more thinking on what this means for the next five to 10 years. Adrian did show some data on regional productivity, but I think it would have been great to see some data or in some scenarios on the national outlook for productivity growth. And it's all the more important because there is a bit of a tug of war at the moment between the potential upsides that digital transformation has created during the pandemic. But on the other hand, of course, a lot of sort of downward effects that have been very, very well, very well described. Your excellent treatment of institutions and policies suggests that a bigger long term gain from more responsive policies to deal with short term challenges is something that really is important. So where does this leave all us? Now, to stay with that French Revolution analogy, I think it is indeed too early to derive definitive conclusions. But this work definitely sets us up for a good discussion and a good reference work for anyone who's ever going to write the real history of the pandemic in five to 10 years. And I'm sure that they will refer to this book and they will say that these folks got some things wrong, but they got a lot right. That's good to know by this time.
Thank you, Bart. Well, we're now going to move to the second half of our session. We'll have questions at the end, hopefully. So if people want to switch seats, I should say, well, that's happening. Bart has actually pretty well teed up our three panelists because he mentioned each of the, each of the things that they're going to be discussing, which include how data can be helpful. They include firm dynamics and they include working from home and the at least some of its effects. So it's beautifully teed up without even realizing it. My panel members probably need no introduction, but I'll introduce them anyway. On my immediate left is Sam Beckett, who is the second Permanent Secretary at the ONS and also the Deputy Chief Executive at the UK Statistics Authority. And if that wasn't enough, she is also the Joint Head of the Government Economic Service. Prior to prior to moving to the ONS, she was the Acting Permanent Secretary at Bays and has had a career of almost as long as mine, I think, at the at the civil, at the civil service, although Sam did move around a little bit, having worked in Bays, the Cabinet Office and the Treasury, whereas I just stayed put at the bank until very recently. In the middle is Sophie Piton, who's a senior research economist at the Bank of England and also a member of the Centre for Macroeconomics. She has a PhD from the Paris School of Economics and previously worked, I think, for about seven years at SEPI, which I had to look up as found the research centre affiliated to the Prime Minister's office in France. So Sophie very much has policy experience as well. Finally, we have Professor Tony Venables, who's a professor at the University of Manchester and the Research Director at the Productivity Institute. He's also a fellow of the British Academy in the Econometric Society. Previously was the Chief Economist at the UK Department for International Development. Has been a professor of both Oxford and the LSE, a research manager at the World Bank and an advisor to to the Treasury. The way this panel session is going to work is each of my speakers is going to initially speak for 10 minutes on a subject of their choice. And then we're going to hopefully have a lot of time for questions. If if you are looking like you're speaking for too long, I will wave my hands frantically to try and stop you, but otherwise try and keep to 10 minutes. Sam is going to speak first.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. And the question I'm going to look at is how can data and statistics support policymakers over on productivity? Now, there's been a very long history of productivity strategies. As as Stephen very kindly reminds me, I've been in the the business over over thirty years. And over my career, I've worked on the five drivers of productivity. I think that was I see a few nods, people who can remember back that far. And that was probably the first productivity strategy that I've worked on. I've also been involved in two industrial strategies. I've observed two plans for growth and now we're very much in the ONS supporting leveling up with the evidence base. I was reflecting on this, this long history of productivity agendas or or related strategies. And I was trying to think about what has changed over over that career. And I think I pointed three things, three being the optimum kind of number, as Bart's told us. First is the importance of place in these agendas. The geography, but also local leaders and institutions. Second, I think is moving beyond GDP as our kind of a holy grail numerator in in these policies. We've got much wider conception of prosperity or progress socially or economically into health and wellbeing and climate and so on. And the third point is the availability of data and statistics. I mean, we've been transforming statistics and I'll talk about that a little bit more, but this mass availability of data. Charlie in our first session talked about it falling like manna from heaven and it does feel like that. It's a byproduct of the digital economy. So the ONS has had to adapt to stay relevant in these three, through these three changes over over the period of policymaking and provide those insights that are needed both for central government, but locally businesses and the public. And of course, as we heard in the first session this morning, a lot of the transformation of statistics in this area dates back to the Bean Review, which really put put the ONS on starters orders, if you like, for needing timelier, more detailed statistics at a finer level of geographical disaggregation. And we've been investing a lot in our productivity data ever since. Increased micro data analysis, for example, that lets us look at within within industry and firm behaviour and dispersion over time. Improved data sources and the management and expectation survey, for example, a collaboration with Paul Misen from Nottingham to enable us to look at how firms have adapted during the pandemic, homeworking and online sales, for example. We've done a lot of work on trying to get that geographical data down to a much more granular level, but maintain its quality. That's a huge focus for us. And one of our recent publications on productivity of towns and travel to work areas is is the conclusion of a lot of work there. Finally, more timely statistics using our flash estimate of productivity, which is now, you know, much more up to date than two years ago. And that's put us in a much stronger position to actually comment on what is going on at the moment as we recover from the pandemic. So just focusing on that flash estimate which came out last week for twenty twenty two Q one, we saw the output per hour was a one point nine percent above its pre pandemic level. So a degree of of recovery. So a degree of, of recovery in, in that data. That batting average effect that has been discussed already. And I hadn't heard Josh Martin's analogy for that, but I love it. That, that, that's really come out of the data now. So you can imagine that that has, has sort of reversed with less productive sectors and like accommodation and food, you know, back open now and the furlough scheme having ended. And what we see is the growth in output per hour is now being led by productivity growth within industries and quite, quite broadly based across the industry groupings. But that within industry productivity growth looks very much like the trend we saw in the decade before the pandemic. So any thoughts that, you know, homeworking, online sales automation, having had a, had a boost through the pandemic was going to change or, or performance of productivity is yet to be seen in the data. We've also done some work looking at utilization of capital stock. And what it shows broadly is that capital has been quite, quite at, at low levels, but has been important to the recovery in G V A post-pandemic, suggesting that those firms that are investing in that within industry effect are leading the recovery. Moving then to the granularity of our data. We, we, we've published this towns analysis back in March. And what that tells you is that towns with relatively high productivity are more likely to specialise in high productivity industries, but that is a small contributor to their better productivity performance. This is because it's actually high productivity firms in those towns that are having most impact. If you control for industry structure and high productivity towns would still be 44% more productive than the national average. So putting some of these new data statistical innovations together, I asked the team what they could tell us about Glasgow, say compared with Scotland, to try and make things relevant for today and where we are. And what we saw is in the 10 years before COVID-19, G V A per job in Glasgow grew at just over 2% compared to 2.7% in Edinburgh. Not a vast, not a vast gap, but that probably adds about £6,000 over the period to wages in, in Edinburgh compared to Glasgow. If you look at the two different travel to work areas, which we can now, because of what we've done with the data, it closes the gap a bit, not hugely, but it does illustrate that, you know, it's important to look at these two different geographical concepts, depending on you, what you're looking for in the analysis. And our new estimates of investment by asset class show that in the 20 years before COVID-19 hit, investment in Glasgow was two thirds in buildings and only just over 10% in intangibles, which as we've heard is very important. We, we think is a key to long run economic prospects. In comparison, Edinburgh was spending over 30% on intangibles over the period. So as you can see, you can start to build up a really rich picture of the different experience of, of, of places. And if you're interested in this, check out our sub-national data strategy. This underpins a lot of this work. We launched that back in December. We followed that up with a work plan last week. So you can see what is planned for the future. The leveling up white paper cited this strategy as a really important enabler of levelling up, but also encouragingly as something, as a way of holding the government to account on its, on its progress and also being more transparent. And we are about to re-establish O N S Local, that's its working title. But these will be regional hubs of statistical expertise across the regions of the UK, which will help local decision makers access not only national statistics, but bring those together with locally gathered richness of statistics too. And I asked Emma Hickman, our sub-national team leader yesterday, what she thought her priorities were for filling data gaps in this area, because I thought that would be something interesting to this audience. Top of her list for research and development and job quality, but also wellbeing and pride of place. And that takes me on to my final theme, which is about that kind of beyond GDP, that richer picture of statistics. And that's an area of intense engagement between the O N S and ESCO. Number one here, it's probably climate and environment. We were here for COP26 in, in Glasgow last autumn and we were launching our, our one-stop shop for climate statistics, the Climate Portal. Again, something to check out on our website. And we've recently started publishing with quarterly GDP, new insights on environment and beyond GDP, to give it that quarterly rhythm that we're used to with the traditional measures. And I think that's quite important symbolically on, on the data. Finally, the massive availability of data. We're trying to harness those new techniques to fill gaps and measure things we never dreamt we could. Applying natural language processing to local media to get a sense of pride of place. Looking at that telecoms, that Google mobility data to see how far people are moving from their home over a typical week. Looking at traffic cams to see what local congestion looks like. The potential is, is huge. But I'll finish with a question that I think chimes very well with Bart's comments. I would love to explore more what we think homeworking is going to do to productivity and to levelling up. In principle, it should really help levelling up. It massively increases that travel to work area. You can now take a job in London and live in London and take that, the London pound back to, you know, your hometown. So it should be good, but how are we going to track that in the data? Or maybe, maybe it would be bad for leveling up. Routine service tasks that can now be done online might not be, might not go from, you know, Brentford to Bradford, but they might go to Bangalore and actually, you know, just lead to another round of outsourcing. I think, I agree, I think it's the biggest single technological change certainly over my career. And so I think it's in all our interests to stay curious and work out how we're going to see the impact on this in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. So first I'd like to thank Steve for inviting me on this impressive panel discussion. And I'll start by saying on the usual boring disclaimer that these are my views and that the views of the Bank of England are any of its committed. So I'm really talking here as a researcher today. And I am most of all a macroeconomist, so I'm going to speak to you more to Paul and Bart's presentation. But I'll take a wider approach and think, start my discussion by thinking about where was productivity before we even entered the pandemic? And then discuss a bit more, in a bit more detail, how I think that the pandemic affected this productivity environment and whether I think that this pandemic could constitute a break to the pre-pandemic trends that we were seeing. So we entered the pandemic in a word that was already marked by many puzzles. The most, the biggest puzzle being this low productivity growth and the slowdown in productivity growth since the global financial crisis, but also depending on the timing, there is discussion of the timing that could also have started in the 2000s. Even though the recent revision, major revisions are introduced by the O N S last year with the introduction of double deflation meant that the UK now is much more in line with other, what we've seen in other just seven economies and less of quite unacceptable slowdown in productivity. But alongside with this, alongside to this productivity puzzle was also other puzzles, like the missing investment puzzle, the fact that we've seen low investment despite high profitability and low R S R since, for the last decades, as well as the flattening of the Phillips curve, so the, the broken link between wage and inflation. And all of these puzzles seem to have happened in most advanced economies since the early 2000s and were accelerated by the global financial crisis. A large part of the research that was trying to make sense of these puzzles relate them to major changes in the way firms produce and compete. And in the US in particular, a few papers show how these could be related to the nature of new technologies and the increasing use of intangible assets. So we've been discussing a lot about the growth enhancing of these intangible assets, but there seems to be issues in the nature of these technologies such that we've entered a low productivity environment. And to give a bit more intuition, what this research is suggesting that because adopting intangible technologies requires some large upfront investments or what we call fixed costs, it gives firms with a high intangible adoption some kind of benefit and some kind of advantage. And so stops new innovative firms from entering the market. So most of the, these papers focus on the US and relate lower productivity growth to rising intangible use and a decline in business dynamism. And by a decline in business dynamism, I mean increasing concentration and a decrease in the entry rate of new firms. But most of this research focuses on the US. So what do we know about the UK experience? Well, a recent paper by Peter Goodridge and Jonathan Haskell that we presented at this conference on Friday, and I think excellent paper, if you want to join the presentation, show that the UK also, the, the slowdown of productivity in the UK is also related to intangible investments. And so they show that the slowdown in productivity was actually strongest in intangible intensive industries. But despite this commonality with the US, the fact that intangibles do play a role in this productivity slowdown in the UK, it seems that the UK haven't experienced such a decline in business dynamism. So we, so, so in my past research, I've shown that the UK entry rate, entry rate has been resilient since the early 2000s, but also other UK researchers have also shown that concentration has not increased as much in the UK as it has increased in the US. So overall, what, what we know is that while intangibles were also key in the UK, it seems that the mechanisms through which the effects of productivity and the slowdown of productivity growth might be different between the UK and the US. So I don't think yet we've identified these UK specificities and there's clearly more work to do on this. And if you need more research ideas to work on this, I'd suggest you read the recent book by Jonathan Haskell and Stan Westlake, Restarting the Future, that provides an excellent overview of the potential mechanisms that could explain low product, low productivity growth related to intangible investments. But to sum up, the world we were living in before the pandemic was already marked with low investment, disappointing productivity growth, and certainly due to a lack of institutions that promote these intangible intensive investments. So how can the pandemic constitute a break to these trends? Well, there's already been a lot of discussion here about how the pandemic already affected the trend, the cyclical or the measures of productivity. So I won't go into the details, but we've already discussed how the, the resilient productivity growth and the positive productivity growth during the pandemic was related to compositional effect and the, the fact that the sector that shrunk most were sectors that were low productive. But these effects are starting to unwound. And now, as Sam just explained, where the positive productivity growth that we see now is mostly driven by within sector positive growth. I'll have a quite a different view on what that reflects because what we've also starting to see is an increasing number of insolvencies in the recent months. So what I suggested that maybe these within sector effects reflect rather some start, some new relocation within sectors across firms. And so what we usually call the cleansing effect of the crisis. So the fact that the recession might push out some low productive firms outside the market. Because we know that this did not happen until now. There has been some research at the bank looking at the role of government support schemes in helping firms. And it has been shown that this government support scheme was very successful in helping those firms being alive over the pandemic, but that they know that these schemes have ended, that we've seen a rise in insolvencies, especially in industries where the firms benefited most from the government support schemes. So maybe the positive within sector productivity growth that we're seeing now is reflecting these within sector reallocations across firms. And so the exits of low productive firms within sectors. So, so far productivity growth was very positive during the pandemic, but that mostly reflects some cyclical dynamics that are already starting to reverse or are unlikely to persist. But the pandemic did bring about some structural changes, in particular in the ways we work and the way we consume. So I won't speak about the ways of working. I think a few other people here will speak about the effect of remote working of productivity. But what I'll focus on is rather on the ways, the changes in the ways we consume and speak into a bit more details about the rise in business registrations. Actually, that was also already put forward in earlier discussions. So at the onset of the crisis, some economists were worried that the shift to online consumption would benefit incumbent firm like Amazon and lead to a significant increase in concentration in markets, so an increase in the market share and market power of these firms with negative long-term effects on productivity growth, as I've introduced in my, in my overview of pre-COVID trends. But quickly, these worries were challenged and as Paul showed, they were in the real time data. We've seen a surge in business registration. So in a paper that came out last week with the co-authors from U C L and the University of Kent, we tried to understand better what are these firms that were created. So first, we show that this booming entrepreneurship is very surprising in historical terms. Entrepreneurship usually declines in recessions. And the only time the entrepreneurship actually increased during recession was in post-war periods. So post-World War One and post-World War Two. And these recessions actually share the common feature that the economy restructures to substantial shifts in consumer, consumer demand and producer supply. So during the COVID-19 pandemic, the widespread lockdowns relocated demands to sectors that complied with social distancing, so increased demand for online retail, for instance. We find indeed that entrepreneurship inclined, increased most in the online retail sector. And in areas also there where the Google mobility indicator of brick and mortar retail footfall declined most. So really, this booming entrepreneurship is reflecting the reallocation of demand towards, reflecting this demand shift. We also looked at who founded these new firms. And we find that the rise in business creation was driven by first-time solo entrepreneurs. So entrepreneurs who didn't own a business at the start of the pandemic or didn't start a business five years prior to the pandemic. So, well, it's these, these new, these new firms or then the, the effect of these new, we then ask what will be the effect of these new firms on the economy? Given that, that the, we know that the type of firms, these firms funded by first-time solo entrepreneurs tend to be smaller in the long run and are also more likely to dissolve. So to look at the effect on the real economy, we match these data to job postings data from Indeed. And so we can look at whether the firm started to pass vacancies online and starting like trying to hire people. But what we find surprisingly is that these new firms do pass online vacancies and do so much more and more quickly that firms that were born pre-pandemic. So they already contributed by a significant amount to their recovery in vacancies in the UK in the recent months. But to contrast these positive news, we also find that these firms are also twice likely to, more likely to dissolve within the first year of their existence than firms created pre-pandemic. So all of these results are suggesting that while booming entrepreneurship has helped the recovery in employment in the short run, the longer run effects and the implications for competition in productivity are still very unclear. Yes, so maybe I'll stop here because I think I'm.
I'm going to get up. One, one, one of the big advantages of being in person is you can actually stand up and kind of wave your arms and do things that you can, pretty ineffective if you do them on Zoom, put it that way. Okay. What are the long run? I want to think about the sort of really long run effects of COVID. What, what, what are the ratchets? What are the step changes, the things that we think? The things that we think are kind of irreversible. So I'm not a macroeconomist, I haven't got any numbers, but yeah, let's speculate a bit about these long run step changes. I suppose there are two that worry me, two, two that, well, one worries me, the other doesn't. I mean, one is the, the early childhood stuff, right? Has a generation really been scarred and damaged? We don't know, and I wouldn't be remotely competent to talk about it, even if we did. The other one, I think, is, is working from home. So I'm going to try and rise a little bit to the bean challenge of this morning, and the issues that Sam was talking about. You know, what, how, how do we think things, economic geography, cities are going to change? If we think that a hybrid model is likely to take over for a large class of, you know, professional, professional workers. So I'm not going to be talking about the back office stuff or the people who have to come in every day anyway. But for a large group of professional workers for whom interaction is important, I suppose I think there that, yeah, a kind of three or four day in-work hybrid model is the one that, you know, I would have a hunch, would conjecture, would be likely to survive. But if that's the case, then, 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 then so what? Well, what, what will that do to productivity? Once again, I'm going to confess complete ignorance. I haven't got the faintest idea what it's going to do to productivity. Or at least, you know, we, we have these studies, generalizing out of sort of Teddy sales and call centers and things that really don't, don't, don't find very convincing. Yeah, the time will tell. So I don't know what it's going to do to productivity, but I do know it's, it's, it's a big deal. It will change people's lives. It will deliver wellbeing. It will make, make them happier, more utility. It's a room full of economists, right? I can use that word. More, more, more utility to people who are able to do this. So, so, so that's great. But so what? What, what, what then changes? Now, yeah, I think there's maybe a view that, oh, yeah, that's, it's, the pandemic's been awfully bad for cities and cities are going to go into some sort of terminal decline or something. You know, I essentially want to argue the exact opposite. If you think about cities, they're a balance between the costs and the benefits. And the costs are high commuting costs, rent, commuting costs are a real cost relative to the transfer payment. So not quite so bad, depending whether you like your landlord. The costs on the one side and the benefits on the other side. And I'm not going to enumerate all the benefits, but it's, you know, face-to-face interaction and creativity and all that stuff that you've already about. So cities are balanced between those two things. What does hybrid working, you know, three or four days a week do? It cuts, cuts that commuting cost by, you know, 20 or 25%, right? So it's a clear reduction in, you know, one, one side of the balance, one, 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 one side of the equation. So it seems to me pretty, you know, pretty, pretty clear that cities actually become more attractive as places to, to base the activities, places in which you do work for those three, three or four days a week. You can run this, lots of little quantitative spatial models now, you know, calibrated on cities and things. And you run a computing cost reduction through those, those sorts of models. And what, what happens? You know, the rent gradient flattens a bit, the commuting zone becomes wider. I don't know where an uneaten is, but maybe it's now inside it, right? The commuting zone becomes larger. So more people are actually working in the city, not at any point in time, but in a sense, the city is using its, its asset, the ability to put people close together, just using it more, more effectively, getting more people in there, even if it's only, you know, for, for a certain number of days a week. So, you know, running it through those models, yeah, edge work, you know, jobs on the edge of the city don't do that well. Smaller towns don't do that well. You know, if you're going to commute, you might commute somewhere serious, not to, not, not, not somewhere on the edge. So well, the simple economic reasoning says, yeah, cities should, should do well out of this, right? Magnitude, what do we think about that? Well, I suppose I think it's, you know, my sort of basic hunch is it's pretty small beer I'm talking about here. But then, of course, you think about history, you know, what enabled cities to form? You know, it was the horse-drawn omnibus, then trains, then, then tubes. It was reductions in commuting costs that caused cities to, to grow and boom, right? So maybe this is, maybe this is big. Maybe this is really big. I mean, the Elizabeth line, and I was, you know, a little bit involved in some of the original cost benefit appraisal, very long time ago. And, yeah, the arguments were, you know, it enabled more people to get into the center. And that, of course, you know, evaporation effects, all that, we actually raised productivity just because, you know, more people were getting in. So, but that was a reduction in commuting costs. Okay. Well, what are all the other factors? Let me just, two minutes, one minute, just talking about a number of other issues. Maybe commuting quality goes down, right? Clearly, if you're worried about getting sick every time you go on the tube, that's going to cut the other way. But I don't think that's a step change. I don't know. It's a ratchet effect there. Maybe other things go wrong with your transport system. Obviously, New York isn't recovering as well as London. London's not recovering as well as many European cities. Part of the New York story is the subway's become absolutely horrible for reasons I don't want to go into, or certainly describe. You'll maybe, you know, government does something foolish, like, you know, cutting funding to public transport and frequency of services or something. So obviously, commuting quality matters. Obviously, productivity may go up or down a bit. That's another factor we want to, want to play into this. And what about wages? I just said at the beginning, right, we all get, you know, once we're hybrid, you're getting this utility kick from not having to go in every day, not to mention saving a bit of money. Who captures that benefit? Right? I mean, that's, you know, some, simple little general equilibrium question. It's not likely to be the workers. I mean, they're the direct beneficiaries, but it's going to be shifted depending on the elasticity of supply and demand and all, all sorts of things. So maybe it ends up going into land rents or, well, I don't know, put an intermediate step in there. If it's not workers, then their wages will go down relative to what they would have been and relative to other people, right? People are getting this utility benefit instead. So that's a cost reduction for firms. Maybe landlords capture it all, as they usually do in cities. But that would be if firms are able to expand in cities, right? They've got, not, they've got these, they're capturing the benefits of the, 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 the lower commuting costs. They've been passed to firms that will want to locate there and expand. So, yeah, just thinking through the equilibrium effects, leaving with this, you know, being very optimistic about cities. I don't mean just London here, plenty of other cities where, you know, commuting costs are a drag on, on, on activity and, you know, fall presumably in this world. But the final point I want to make is just to reiterate, think of it as, you know, using the real benefits of cities more effectively, right? You're getting more people in to do the, the interaction. They're there three or four days a week, not five, but maybe that's enough to generate the, the interaction. Okay.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, we have a bit, bit of time for questions and comments on the floor. I know Paul's been aching to ask his question. So there should be a microphone coming your way.
Thank you. Sorry for my impatience. I, I, I found it very interesting to watch the presentation and also hear the discussion, the panel. And just a couple of, I want a couple of comments and, and also some thoughts about what, what might have changed in the short term and the medium term. So a lot of what we saw in the presentation is kind of echoed in data that I've been looking at, the decision maker panel and the ONS data showing labor productivity rising during the pandemic and then falling more or less back to normal by the end of 2021. DMP data that looks a little bit further forward into 2022 and beyond is, sorry, is suggesting that labor productivity will probably in the medium term be settling about minus 1% relative to where it was pre-pandemic. And with TFP about minus 0.5%. So the question is, what is driving, what is driving all these things? I mean, it was great to see the list, by the way, Paul, of those, all those different drivers that were moving productivity in different directions. Here's a couple of other thoughts for you. During the pandemic, I think there are, there were quite significant additional unit costs of production and distribution, simply because you had to incur all those costs of masks and screen and sanitizers and all the rest of it. So we estimated that as about 7% increase during that period. That's kind of fallen away. But as we've kind of got back more to normal, we've seen much more staff shortages impacting distribution and production. So in 2022, that's a factor which has perhaps impacted productivity a bit more. So you might want to look into that. Obviously, the smaller people are back in the room, the between firm effects have kind of disappeared, but the within firm effects are still there. So those things are still around. And we still have those supply chain disruptions because COVID is still a really big thing in China and affecting distribution there. For, for the longer term, I think really the working from home question, which Tony helpfully kind of expanded on, is really a significant factor. Really difficult to know whether it's net positive or net negative for productivity. But it has possibly brought into play a whole load of more, whole load more capital that was at home and is now being used in production and therefore perhaps able to enhance our productivity. But it's also changing the, the focus of business investment away from physical tangible assets towards intangibles. There's evidence that firms are spending much more or planning to spend much more on training, IT and other forms of intangible, which could lead to higher productivity. So those are some thoughts to perhaps discuss and respond to.
Well, interesting thoughts. Josh up there has a question, I believe. And then I'll see who wants to respond.
Thanks very much. So we've heard lots of potential benefits and potential damages of, of, of the pandemic on productivity. I'd like each of the speakers to come down on one side of that fence or the other. Are you team catalyst or team scarring? In just a few words, pin your colors to the mast.
Well, that, that, that is a challenge. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come down first on the side of, actually, I don't think, I don't think it's one or the other. I, I'm, to be convinced, I'm to be, I'm to be convinced by the scarring arguments, to be honest. I, I don't, I don't find the scarring arguments convincing, but equally, mainly because we haven't seen it in the data yet, it's not at all clear to me that we're getting a big productivity benefit either. So I'm going to be right in the middle, but I'm going to hand, go down the panel to see where everybody else is.
I mean, I, I think, I mean, furlough has been an amazing experiment on trying to avoid risks of scarring. It's really interesting to see the compare and contrast with the US example. I think it'd be fascinating to see how that plays out. I mean, I think I, I started, I started the day being very much an optimist on thinking this has been a fantastic, albeit expensive, experiment in terms of avoiding scarring, labor market scarring. But as I've heard the conversations today, I've also thought about maybe it has made firms return to normal because they were connected by, to their staff. So instead of the kind of automation, you know, digitization and, you know, online environment, actually, they've welcomed back the employees that were on furlough and gone back to normal. And I think anecdotally, we probably all see a little bit of that in, in, you know, the pubs and restaurants that we attend. We, we all had to order with through a barcode on our phones. And now, of course, it's back to, you know, somebody, you know, having your menu and going to the bar. So I, I kind of, I think it's sort of mediated my optimism a bit today. But good question. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent question. I, I think I started, when I started looking to the booming entrepreneurship data, I was quite optimist, seeing the data and thinking that also there were a lot of surveys from the LSE on technological adoption by firms that I thought that could accelerate some more new technology adoption. But the more now that I think about it, I think all the government support schemes helped maintain actually productivity such that we might not see such as caring, but we don't, won't see either such a break in the low productivity environment we're already seeing. Because all the barriers to making these intangible investments and productivity enhancing are still here and are still to build dealt with. And I think that basically all of these government support scheme helped us returning to the pre-COVID world rather than entering a new, more productivity enhancing world. So I think I'd be like Steve, rather neutral on the effect of the pandemic overall.
Small plus on wellbeing for the work from home reasons, but productivity measures will probably fail to capture it.
I think, I, I think actually that, that is one, that is something I'd very much agree with. And I think Sam was hinting at the same thing, you know, we won't see it in GDP, but there's been a clear increase, I think, in people's wellbeing as a result of the fact that, you know, people can now choose that balance between working from home and getting the benefits of not commuting versus the face-to-face contact as well. So we see, we're seeing both, people are trying to find the balance. And so again, wellbeing, I think, is going to go up, but maybe not GDP.
Can I add three words?
Yes.
For some people.
For some people. Yes, yes.
Can I, can I also? So we, we published something on homeworking, I think, yesterday. And it's really quite interesting, hybrid working, I should say, not homeworking. And hybrid working, about eight, over 80% of employees are expecting their future to be hybrid working. I think it's 43% of businesses expect their future of their workforce to be hybrid working. Now, they're not from the same survey and slightly different time periods, but I think there is a bit of a tension there. It comes back to this point about who captures the rent, isn't it? In a very tight labor market, the home worker, the, the employee captures the rent. But if you reverse that out, which we could see over the future, you know, if, if the economy slows down, then we might see that more evenly spread or captured by the employer who's less keen on hybrid working.
Absolutely. But.
So on the last point, I mean, productivity and wellbeing in the longer term are related. So one of the things that has to give, and I think Sam makes a really important point, there is a disconnect between what people wonder what businesses want. So that also has to give. Businesses can do two things, they can either ignore it, and it will be bad for productivity, or they can strategize around it, and then to be win. But my overall answer to the question that Josh is asking is that you have to distinguish maybe some level and growth of that. I think visual transformation by firms has been taken forward one to two years. That's a permanent level of effect that will not go away. That's a win because they hit early, then they will have done underwater. Otherwise, it's probably going to be wash, it seems, scarring and some.
Okay, we have a question at the end of the row. Is there a microphone?
Thank you for the great discussion. I just want to get back to the intangibles story. I'm wondering whether there is an effect on the shift within the intangible investment of firms that might have an effect on the quality of productivity in general. So for instance, are we assisted, are we seeing something like a shift from R and D investment to database investment that have an effect on productivity? To the extent that, for example, R and D innovation productivity has one pathway of productivity that is sustainable and probably higher quality vis a vis, for instance, investing in database that feed artificial intelligence and cost-cutting strategies of firms. And therefore, we have a productivity effect which is less viable, less sustainable in general. So are we, is there any reflection on this? are we, is there any reflection on this? In other words, true intangibles on productivity and I'm wondering which intangibles on which productivity. Thank you.
Shall I take this? Yeah, so thanks. A very good question. I think there is definitely more work to do, but I think the papers I mentioned about how intangibles might entrench the position of some leading firms actually refer to R and D type of intangible technology. I mean, it type of investment, if I should say. And because that's one of the easiest measure we have in firmable data. So I think most of the studies so far are focusing on R and D, though there is a lot of research also on data, on the use of data, which I think is also a different, yeah, subject as data brings about some issues around externalities. And I think that was raised at some point or with this this morning, I think. But that's a very good point. And I think that we're also the VNS is doing a lot of work right now on including more type of assets into the measures of intangibles we have as the limited number of assets are capitalized now in the national accounts. So that's a very early work yet on this type of subjects. And I hope that we'll have more more to say in the future on this.
Tony, did you want to add?
Oh, it's, I mean, it was, yes, to each point. I'm a lot of data based subjects, zero. So I best to steal your customers and you best to steal mine.
Okay, we are at two thirty now, but I'm going to take one more question if there if there's a burning question that somebody wants to ask. Yes, gentlemen, over there. A microphone will come your way.
Hi. So the homeworking article that Sam mentioned was ours. So just one thing, basically, which is that one of the main reasons amongst both individuals and businesses planning to use homeworking was increased productivity. I'm at a risk here of Josh telling me that productivity isn't an individual metric, but but both individuals and businesses both feel that increased productivity is a a really strong reason for using homework.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. A very good point on which to end this session. I'd like to again thank my panelists, Sam Beckett, Sophie Peteon, Tony Venables, together with the presenters, Paul Mauden, Adrian Pabst and Bart Fanark. And I guess we can carry the conversation on over to a coffee, which will be served somewhere in the foyer, I believe. Thank you.